Study meeting of Independent School District 624, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Daniel?
Here.
Here.
The master?
Sorry, Fogi?
Here.
Thompson here, our PM.
Is on his way. All right, thank you. We will move into our first discussion item, B1, the free school meals update. Mr. Wald and Ms. Lane.
Yeah, thank you. Chair Ellison, members of the board, as you know, Governor Walz signed free school breakfast and lunch law, or bills into law this past March, and Minnesota has become one of eight states in the nation this year that will be providing free lunches for breakfast and lunches to students. It's been an interesting year for school nutrition staff supervisors as they've figured out how to make that work during COVID, and now it's changed to more permanent breakfast and lunch. And so I thought it was a good idea to invite Bridget Lane, our Director of Nutrition Services, to come and give you an overview of how that's going to work, not only for White Bear Lake, but in schools across the state. Turn over to Ms. Lane.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board. As Tim described, Governor Walz signed this into law, which would have been March 17th, 2023, but it went into effect July 1st already. So we've been operating it with some of our summer school programs over the summer, so they've had free meals in some locations already. But what is the difference? So here's kind of the update already for you. National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, School Breakfast Program, that's what we've been operating for years and years, with the exception of those couple of COVID. That is federally funded reimbursement rates for free, reduced, and paid students. Fully reimbursed free students. Minnesota added reimbursement to allow reduced students' meals at no cost, and then paid students received a small amount of federal and state reimbursement to offset their costs, which is how we could keep them at $295 elementary and $325 secondary last year. This year, the main difference that families and staff will see is it's called the Minnesota Free School Meals Program, which provides additional state funding that will reimburse for students who do not qualify for free or reduced-priced meals. That means all students receive meals at no cost. The big thing that is not different is we still have to follow all the same rules. So we still follow the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. Minnesota is covering the cost for us. So a little more on the details. That allows one breakfast and one lunch per student each in-person academic school day. Homeschool students are not eligible. Let me catch up here. The offering breakfast is now required, and that is even on late start days. In all of our White Bear Lake schools, we've already done this, so no changes there. Preschool is eligible. There were some up and down question marks on preschool over the summer. MDE did come out with some rules that say preschool is eligible as long as they are enrolled in our school district and operated by our school district, so that would be all of our programs in which we serve meals. We do still need to distribute the application for educational benefits. That's a federal requirement. A lot of people used to know it as the free and reduced lunch application. We've been working over the last couple of years to eliminate that, and I feel like this is the year. It's pretty much gone. We've been working really hard at that. And that helps families really understand that it's not just an application for lunches. It was very confusing when it said free and reduced lunch application, and there's so many other benefits. There's also no minimum percentage of free and reduced-priced eligible students required to be eligible for free meals. So again, meals at no cost. The program is permanent, meaning that it is signed into law, and so that law would need to be repealed in order for this to go away. It does not include after-school snack, supper, or non-school days. So again, one breakfast, one lunch each in-person day, which brings us to the pandemic. We cannot send meals home like we did during the pandemic, and that would include any potential e-learning days. So it has to be in-person school days. Of course, there's always an exception, which would be field trips. If they go on a field trip, we can still provide them a lunch or breakfast, and PIN numbers are still required. So again, in the schools, a lot of things remain the same. As I mentioned, we've been working really hard to change the names of those applications and continue to have families fill them out. So Marissa has been working with me to create some flyers and nice communications. So this reminds staff families, it went out to all families, why they might want to fill it out, and some other good benefits that they would have. And on the front page of this flyer, again, reminds them that meals are free, but please do still complete the application, benefits for your family, benefits for the school. And then this postcard also went out to all families in the district, and oops, one too far. And this postcard would tell the families that meals are free. There are some things that require payment still. It tells them how to deposit money into their account, gives them a practice PIN pad so that the kids can start practicing their PIN numbers, tells them how to find the lunch menu, and again, tells them how they can fill out that application for benefits. I'll try not to get too detailed in the numbers, but just so you can kind of see how it's been all over the board. We have different rates for free, reduced, and paid. You can see where federal had paid us, state paid us, and then the families combined additional dollars to get to those final reimbursement rates last year. You'll see KKFA, that's the Keep Kids Fed Act. That was a federal act that was a one-year provision last year, put in federally for all states where it had provided an additional 40 cents at lunch and 15 cents at breakfast. That is gone this year, and so this year's reimbursement rates are as-is, so $433 across the board. And you can see that the biggest impact, of course, is paid, where state is adding $385 for all paid students to get us up to $433 across the board. How does that work out? Basically, we get an increase of 40 and 1/2 cents for elementary, and this is all lunch, 10 and 1/2 cents secondary. Free and reduced students actually end up with a 20 and 1/2 cent decrease per meal at lunch, and that's because of that Keep Kids Fed Act dollars. Moving forward, again, we use all of last year's numbers exact, so there'll be changes throughout the year. But if you went off last year's numbers, almost 3.4 million in lunch reimbursement. Next year's lunch, using those exact same numbers and the exact same free, reduced, and paid rates, it would be just over 3.4 million, so a difference of approximately a positive $63,000. And again, those are exact numbers. Nothing will be exact next year, but just to give you an idea. And then the same thing for breakfast. Breakfast gets even more complicated because there's some schools that are severe need, some schools that are not severe need. Kindergarten breakfast has actually been free in the state of Minnesota for quite some time. So all that changes, and again, we get to go straight across the board and do $228 for non-severe-need schools and $273 for severe-need schools. We only have three schools in the district that count as severe need this year, so primarily $228 for all of our schools. How does that break down? Again, difference because of severe need and not, but decrease at paid students, and then an increase for free and reduced, and a big increase for kindergarten. Breaks down to a slight decrease in breakfast of $48,000. Again, completely off of last year's numbers during COVID, when meals were free, breakfast skyrocketed. And so we anticipate that happening again this year. We'll see large increases in breakfast and what we are calling a basic wash. Which was happening years ago. When you see a mall break broken down, if the number stayed the same, it would be almost a wash. $15,000, completely negligible in our budget. And so we're hoping that number actually grows. We know meals are going to grow. And so we're pretty happy with where the rates came up because we've never seen reimbursement rates of that much of an increase over the last few years. So we're happy with that. As I mentioned, some things are not free, and so we tried to market this as well so families know. Milk only, that's an elementary thing, homeschoolers, sorry, home lunchers bring lunch and they want to purchase milk, and that does cost 50 cents. USDA is very clear that lunch is three components, and so if they only want milk, it's not a meal, and so it's not reimbursable, and there are ways around it. If they don't have money in their account, we can ask them to go back and get a vegetable and a fruit to go with their milk. Goes with their home lunch. Everyone's happy, no charges. Secondary students, lots of extra entrees. They love to buy extra entrees. I'm sure they will continue and probably even buy more extra entrees this year. So we just have a procedure in place that will make sure they check their balances before they get their extra entree. That way, nobody goes into the negative. And then regarding negative balances, everyone will start the year at $0. Our staff have been really trained, especially with the changes in meal charge policies, to save things like that's not included in your meal, or those Doritos cost $1.50 if you would like to purchase, kind of hinting at them, you don't have money without saying you don't have money. And then we ask the kids to put it back so that we're not taking anything from them. They are putting it back. And then meals for adults are not free, so $225 breakfast, $495 lunch. We do have a nice handful of adults that eat the lunch as well. That's the overview in short form. Question?
Thank you.
I am a very fast talker, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Lane? Oh, Ms. Daniels?
This year, it's education. Share table. Put it on the share table for another child. They still do that. They still do that here as well. They have the backpack through the. They won't accrue, so we're anticipating set of more communication this year. So we started it with all the flyers and postcards, and so the plan is to run weekly balance checks and start making phone calls home every week and explain to the parents why somebody might be negative, because that's going to be very confusing, why did my child go negative? And then we can talk with them about, look, here's how you can add money into your account, or we can put a stop on the account based on something the parent might tell us.
And will the schools be responsible for me?
We're going to try to do it ourselves, hoping that it's not too, too much. Exactly.
Thank you for all your work. I know that this has been a lot in a really short amount of time for both Finance Department and for Nutrition Services. But just speaking as someone who has just missed the cutoff for the educational benefits last year, this will be hugely helpful for my family, and I think a lot of other families that we just don't know what the impact will be. So I really appreciate all the work that our kids are going to get fed, so. All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. We will move into discussion item B2, Elementary English Language Arts Curriculum Review Process. Ms. Babish and Ms. Miller?
Chair Ellison and Board, thank you so much for having us here. And we're excited to talk about some updates related to elementary English Language Arts and broadly literacy in White Bear Lake area schools. All right, so I'm talking, again, the literacy update, but then also we just underwent a two-year ELA curriculum review process that we have reached a conclusion, and we are implementing a new ELA curriculum training tomorrow. First, I want to start with our standards-based learning framework. This is our structure framework around instruction and our universal core. So we really look at three bucket areas, a guaranteed and viable curriculum, universal instruction that's evidence-based, and then assessment practices that really help us understand where's each student at in that learning progression. And this is our overall framework that we are continuing to work on and implement with all teachers. Teachers are going to continue to get more information about this and support all of our work through this framework. Starting with our why. As a district instructional leadership team, two years ago, we started this literacy, this really intense literacy journey, and so it was really important for us first and foremost to develop a vision. So this was the vision we came up with. Each student is guaranteed learning experiences that develop their lifelong literacy. And as you notice, some of the words are bolded. That's because we also further define them. So each, we literally mean every single student in White Bear Lake area schools and aligning with our strategic plan. Guaranteed, this was a really important one for us because we believe as the adults, we have the responsibility, a promise to our students, to achieve this for them. We recognize that literacy, knowing that it's read, write, speak, and think. Yes, there's a literacy block within our instructional schedule, but it's also something we need to continuously tap into because that's how we learn, reading, writing, speaking, and thinking. And that develop word in our vision is really around understanding becoming a proficient reader is a growth process. Now, taking a look back, then over the course of the two years, we had three key structures for learning and for implementing the work. And the first was our broad district instructional literacy or instructional leadership team. And this included every leader, elementary principals, instructional coaches, teacher leaders, early childhood. And really, we wanted to focus on our learning and building our capacity to lead this really critical work. We also, through that team, we completed the Letters for Administrators course, which was a two-day course, a broad overview around the letters component, which I'll talk more about in a little bit. Letters, so speaking of letters, professional development. I'm proud to say, actually, we have over 200 educators that have either completed letters or are in the process of completing letters. We are looked at as a district of how are you doing that? That is remarkable. And really, how we're doing it is strong support from our district leadership to do that financially. Also, our principals figuring out ways to support teachers in completing that coursework because it is rather intensive. And then, of course, our teachers are so committed to it. They will say it's some of the best professional learning they've ever had. And then, like I said previously, we went through the ELA curriculum review process, which was a two-year process that really started with just first and foremost looking at our current state. And as you probably have seen, we're not happy with our current state, and so it was really a sense of urgency around changing that. And then from there, we looked at the research and evidence-based practices to really ground ourselves in that. Then we developed local priority statements, which we will talk about in a second, that led us to ultimately selecting a core universal curriculum. I want to really highlight a key piece of where I know this work is making a difference for our students. MCAs will be one of the later, the lagging indicators that we will see in terms of is this working? So we really need to look at some other assessment pieces, and where I really want to focus is on our foundational reading skills. This is an assessment that our kindergarten and first-grade students take. It's around phonemic awareness, which is a critical foundational learning or a reading skill, and it's highly predictive of future reading success. And as you can see, last winter to spring, we have almost hit that 80% mark on our kindergarten and first graders being considered at low risk. That is a huge celebration for us because we have especially put in, all of our kindergarten teachers have completed the letters course. Our elementary instructional coaches focused with our kindergarten and first-grade teachers around curriculum assessment and instruction and phonemic awareness and supported them, and these are the results that we achieved. So same looking here, what's great to look at this one about is that it shows you a cohort of students. So spring of '21, '22, around 63% were considered low risk. To the spring of first grade, that same group of students, 78, 79% were considered low risk. So it's making a difference, the work that we are doing. So going back to the curriculum review process, one of the really amazing things about this process is we had over 50 educators. Elementary, early childhood, and middle school participated in this curriculum review process. And the purpose of it was to really research, evaluate, and develop that standards-based learning framework for our students. We grounded ourselves in that shared literacy vision, our mission statement. We used our equity commitment throughout the process, and then also our locally developed priority statements. I know they are rather small on the screen, but you have them in front of you there. These priority statements were developed by the committee. We know anytime we are looking at a curriculum, they know how to make it shiny bells and whistles, that we really need to ground ourselves first in what should it have, what is evidence-based curriculum? And so they developed this after looking at all of the research. And then we utilize these local priority statements throughout the whole process, including piloting and collecting feedback related to these local priority statements, and then ultimately making the decision. So the recommendation, all said and done, was that we implement this next school year, beginning this school year, CKLA, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts Amplify, CKLA. K5 as our universal curriculum. And again, it really stood out when we considered our local priority statements evidence-based. There was a lot of teachers' feedback around usability for teachers as well, and highly engaging for students, as well as really rigorous, which we know from evidence, we need to have rigorous curriculum for students. We also, with CKLA, we, as a curriculum review team, we went through our equity decision-making protocol as well in making that decision. Then the team had to shift their focus after the decision was made to, all right, what is our implementation plan? Knowing that we still have around 150 educators finishing up year two of letters, and that is a significant load. And really, what do we want to do in terms of implementation? So we did a cost-benefit analysis, and when it all came down to it with all the options of should we do a K5 implementation? Should we just do kindergarten? What they arrived at was they felt extremely passionate that it was a K5 implementation. And really, it was around ensuring that we are in a aligned system that collectively together, all of us focused on this work was going to make a difference for students. And quite honestly, after they've been engaged in letters learning, it was how can we wait any longer for our students? We're ready to apply this, and we need a curriculum that best supports us in applying this. So we went for a full K5 implementation, and like I said, teachers are having a full-day overview training tomorrow up at the beautiful North Star Elementary. Then we also have a plan for ongoing job embedded support. And so we are going to be doing communities of practice where we focus both at a district job-alike groups and then also building groups around the implementation. Of course, our instructional coaches are absolutely critical in this implementation as they support students. We're also working on our instructional schedule to ensure that we have that viability of the time we need to be able to teach this curriculum. So with that, our focus for this next year, we continue the structure of having a district instructional leadership team at elementary that is going to continue to be focused on our standards-based learning framework and the implementation of CKLA, and really looking at instructional look-for's, supporting principals, instructional leadership, and instructional coaches. We continue our letters professional development. We add in this year with our letters professional development some more of our special education teachers. And then ELA curriculum review really goes to that implementation plan and making sure that we achieve deep, deep implementation. We know year one is always the most challenging year. We don't know what we don't know, but teachers are really excited to get started with CKLA. And then looking ahead, so this year is our last big group going through letters training, and then it will be ongoing maintenance, and as we hire new staff, continuing to have them take the letters course. We also now have five internal letters facilitators for units one through four, and then next year, those five facilitators will also become internal facilitators for units five through eight. So we're also developing local capacity to support this work. What questions might you have?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Dr. Arcand?
I don't know if you can answer it, but as we move forward and we have this letters course that we really, the state, kind of wants us to have, are the post-secondary then giving these new teachers or these new teacher programs training? Because it would make sense that they would get it there if they're cramming out a post-secondary before coming here, and I don't know if any of them are doing it.
Yeah, so there are some local teacher prep programs that are doing it and doing it actually fairly well, but it's still ongoing work. I also work as an adjunct instructor at St. Mary's University, and I know Pelsby has been doing a very rigorous study on coursework and giving them very specific feedback around that, so I know that it's coming, but it's also a really big shift.
Thank you.
Ms. Fogi?
I have two questions, thank you. And the results from winter to spring are fabulous, which is excellent, and I would love to see that reflected in in this state testing as well as that comes out. But even that bit of data, just this state of course is really important. I'm interested in, is there district-wide progress monitoring as part of the curriculum that across the board, everyone will be doing to see what's working well?
Yeah, so part of the district instructional leadership team that continues to support the implementation of CKLA, we're developing unit plans, and what those unit plans really clearly out is like, in this unit, here are the standards that align with this. And then here are the common and essential assessments that we are going to be doing to collect evidence of student learning. So those will be very cleared out and clearly laid out, and it does include that in the CKLA curriculum. Coupled with, we will continue to use FastBridge because those are, they, it tests the automaticity, which is a key piece. Accuracy is an important prerequisite with a skill, but automaticity is ultimately what we need. And so the FastBridge assessments, also for those that are in like a tier-two or tier-three intervention, we will continue to use those as well.
And then I have one more question. Can you clarify if small group instruction, any favorite differentiating? Is small group instruction a part of the science of reading? I've heard these conflicting things, how can that?
Yeah, well, there's no one definition of like, what is the science of reading other than it's a collection of a body of evidence from 50 years' worth, right? And so now it's operationalizing that in actual practice. So what is most important is how are we, what do we understand about the learning progression to becoming a reader? And how do we have assessments and ways to monitor where a student is at? And then are we responsive to that? And that response might be small group instruction. It might still be whole group instruction. But what's key is that it's systematic, it's explicit, and that we continue to do repetition cycles so that they build automaticity with that. So that could be done in small group. It might be whole group. It just depends. Do you like, it depends? Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels?
Oh, so just I understand. And I'm an educator, so I understand all the economics most of the time.
Yeah.
So the Core Knowledge Language Arts, that's for the reading, writing.
Handwriting, too.
And then the letters falls underneath that, that's the reading.
Yeah, I'm so glad you asked that question. So CKLA is our universal core curriculum. That's the student experience. Letters is not a curriculum. It is a professional development course to build teacher knowledge so that they can apply that with any good curriculum, is what they'll say. Yep.
So the ordnance, and all the things that we've done in the past, have those components that they can apply to their language training to the things they already know about?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions from Ms. Thompson?
Just a comment. It's wonderful to see this happening, and I think this combined with FAR and some of the other things we're doing, just the success we're going to see because it's only in a very early implementation and already see the results just from winter to spring. I mean, I just can't wait to see in a couple more years how it's just going to progress and really benefit our students, and it's a helpful tool for our staff. Hopefully, it's making it easier for them to do their jobs that they love so much. Well, thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
Just one question I can't help asking is we're including specially all the elder staff as the elementary media department is slowly coming up from the depths.
Yeah. So our elementary media specialist, now we have two at the time, she was a part of our ELA curriculum review process. And now both her and our other elementary media specialists, they are enrolled in letters as well.
What's the shelf life of a curriculum like this?
Say more about shelf life.
So the curriculum review cycle is, I guess that's the first question. How many years is that? And the second part of it is if this curriculum is adopted, then what is the process for continuing to update, supplement, ensure that the needs are being met? Because I know that it's not just like, here you go, good luck. So could you just talk a little bit more about that process?
Yep. Yep. So the curriculum review process, you know, could take anywhere from one to eight years. But we know when the state gives us new standards, right? Then we need to start aligning the learning materials to the new standards. And so we've tried to really work with our educators on what, what needs do they have? And where can we maybe find some gains and really take off and run with things so that we're not taking eight years, right? To implement something and then two years later, then we have new standards. And so I think we've really done a great job of putting in checkpoints with our educators around supports of what do you need for this, this new curriculum to align with our standards? And really having this curriculum review team that started out with 50 educators to be able to say, okay, this curriculum that we have is the, the national standards and we need to follow the Minnesota state standards. So we first need to align the Minnesota state standards with these learning materials. And then this curriculum is 180 days' worth of lessons, but we don't have that many instructional days. And so how do we work as a team to really prioritize what students are going to be, what we want them to be able to know and be able to do? And so coming together as a team and agreeing and saying at grade levels, this is what, this is what we believe our students need to know and be able to do, working with our educational equity specialists to ensure that we have culturally sustaining and affirming curriculum as well and supplementing where we feel that there, there's needs there. I think we have really great checkpoints to be able to say, how is it going, right? We're not going to change in the, you know, in the middle of our unit, right? Let's make some notes. Let's get some feedback along the way. So Cynthia's done a great job of setting up, how are we going to get feedback along the way to know what maybe we need to modify and adjust and possibly supplement? But we were going to go through a full year of the curriculum before we. Specifically for state standards, this was probably, I mean, the first time I've seen it, where the standards are most aligned with the reading research. And we know we selected a curriculum that most aligned with the reading research. So I'm, I've never been more confident around alignment there. But yes, we're also left up to how does the state decide those standards are going to shift? But they're pretty solid when you look at compared to reading research.
And, and I'm, I forget if you said this in the presentation, when is implementation of the new state ELA standard?
25, 26.
Okay. Okay. So that'll give you time to kind of walk through the curriculum for a couple of years before implementation happens. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Drifoggi?
So then one clarification on that would be that once you've got, has this been laid out in the curriculum map so teachers can know what essential standards are so that they know what's.
Yeah. Yep. So we use unit plans. Yep.
One more question then. If we're implementing in 25, 26 for the new standards, but we're moving forward with this, how's that affect our MCAs? If they're, if we're, if we're moving forward, but they're still in the past, do we see any issues with that or do we expect that that is going to cause a problem?
Maybe, however, I would say the new standards and this curriculum are more rigorous than the previous, so that only benefits our students would be my hunch, is that we're, yeah, increasing the rigor in a good way.
And I think that's where we need to be, but that's always the issue. If the state is not caught up with where we are, it sometimes can cause a problem.
Yeah. I would say it like science, for example, where it's even more specific around how now this, this topic is moving to a different grade level. That's where it can be more challenging versus ELA. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move into section C, which is review of the superintendent's evaluation. This portion of the meeting may be closed to discuss evaluation of superintendent pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3A. So what's going to happen here is we're going to make a motion to move into closed session. The board will go and Dr. Kazmchek will go upstairs and then we will come out of closed session after that is done and we will adjourn the meeting afterward while we're up in, in that room up there. So if I could please get a motion to move into closed session. Motion by Dr. Newmaster, second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor of moving into closed session, please say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, and we are in closed session.